We will start our facilities committee meeting. We're going to start with courtesy of the floor. Is there any comments about agenda items? There will be another courtesy of floor at the end of the meeting to discuss anything in front of the board. So no courtesy of the floor. Then that brings us to discussion items. I don't see anything on the agenda for discussion items. So we'll roll right into information items. The first one, 3.01 being an energy update.
Just a quick note that last week, we were able, I had the opportunity to sing the board's praises at a press event with Penn Environment and got to highlight the investments the board has made in solar over the years, our electric buses, and our energy conservation efforts and reflect the district in some pretty positive light with a bunch of concerned community folks and got some good press out of it and good news all around for the district.
Any questions? Next one, 3.02 is the Fountain Hill Elementary School project update.
All right, now the game has begun. So awarded contracts last month. We are in the process of getting the paperwork together. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for April 17th. We have got submittals rolling in Fast and Furious already on the project. So the balls are in motion and things are moving ahead. So we are still on track for last day of school in person for our last day for the students at Fountain Hill to be June the 2nd, Monday. That is ahead of the regular last day of the 9th. And we are tracking as well at the new, the temporary facility up in Hanover Township on Valley Center Parkway. That is in the last phases of fit out to be ready for our occupancy effective June Now, part of the approvals process, our conditional approval with the borough, you'll see on the agenda today, four agreements between land development agreements, different agreements, rights of way, sureties, escrows, that are all part of the land development approval process that we're making its way through the process for approval as well. So we can go through those as we get to them in the agenda list.
Any questions about any of that?
We will be holding a sort of last walkthrough with a community event. I forget, April 10th or 12th, we'll send out all the information. It's a community for former graduates, for former graduates, neighbors and friends can get a guided tour of what they remember of Fountain Hill Elementary School because the last month or two of school is going to be a beehive of activity of getting ready to move everything into the Center Valley Parkway. And then it won't be long until construction demolition starts on the old school. So you're welcome, everyone is welcome to take one last walk through and see that school.
Just have a question to follow up, I think on an idea that Mr. Lozey had a few conversations ago in this committee about mementos of the building itself. Is that going to be?
You can get an idea of potential mementos as we walk through the school.
Like bricks?
I don't know about that. But we'll have an opportunity for those things that are dear to people to have a way, if we're not transferring it into the new school, if it's that dear. But I know I have dibs on the bicentennial plaque in the hallway there.
Fair.
So there'll be opportunities for people to be part of the, not the demolition, but the repurposing of things for the new school.
So just an aside quickly, the bicentennial plaque, you were at Fountain Hill during the bicentennial?
I was the head of the student bicentennial committee, yeah.
There you have it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So people need to find other things that are dear to them in that building that they can contemplate repurposing. And there are conversations clearly underway with that community, with the teachers, about how all this process will work, very similar to the mechanics that went into, you know, shifting gears at Nitchman and all of the HVAC projects we've had going on over summers that around this time of year plans are ramping up about where to move stuff temporarily to so that when we're ready to start up the next school year, wherever it might be, that everyone's good to go. Any other questions? We'll get to the agenda items because as Mark mentioned, we've got a couple that will be on the board agenda on April 28th. But then 3.03, we have a transportation update.
Two items to share this evening. One, so our current agreement with Transpar, providing our onsite general manager and, you know, back end consulting and support services, we're at the end of a three plus one plus one contract. So the three years ends this year and we're recommending that we renew for the first of the one-year renewals. So that's one of the agenda items to follow. Again, you know, satisfied with where we're at in terms of the support and keeping the drivers in the seats and, you know, delivering on transportation needs on a day-to-day basis. Also wanted to share, we've finished rolling out today, I guess, is the last batch of schools, but we are, we've deployed a parent app called Stop Finder to all of our elementary school families. So with this app, you're able to download it and see where your kids are, where your bus is within five minutes of your bus time. So you can't like track everyone's buses around Bethlehem, but you know, if you're assigned stop is at, you know, 8:38 a.m., the, you know, the bus is live, you can see where it is. Want to show you a quick demo, what it looks like for the parents, just to see how neat and easy and cool it is. Just bear with me for one second while we switch over the presentation here. As a parent, you can sign up for either time-based alerts, like, hey, it's five minutes before the bus stop, bing, push notification. Also a geo-fence, so you can put a little circle around your stop and when the bus gets there, whoop, I'm here, I've made it to the stop, or yes, I've made it to school. So you can see my notifications here today and back, I guess, just for today so far. But we can go onto the app and it's just, you know, every day, here's my schedule. So Mickey is riding Route 14. And if I'm a parent, want to see where my child might be, I just select my route and it flies into my house, my stop, and there's my school there, James Buchanan. Let's just say, well, I want to have a geo-fence for my bus stop so I don't have to wait out in the cold for 10, 15 minutes. Want to cut it a little close and play dangerous. I can just add a new geo-alert. And we're going to call this bus stop. And I will just put that geo-fence right around my bus stop. Maybe we'll make it a little bigger here. Just plunk that wherever I want. I can send that alert when the bus gets there, when it departs. We just want to know when it gets there, I just want to get the kids there on time. And we save that. So now tomorrow, I now have a geo-fen set up and now I'll get push notification when the bus is, you know, approaching that. So that is, and that's the high-tech part of it, that's it, not much more. But for parents wanting to know where things are, what's happening, you know, your route's there and parents get that extra communication throughout the day. Now, we are, it is still pilot, so we had 10 schools through today. We had 610 people. We rolled out today, the last six schools, we had 660 already signed up just today. They got that two-page instruction sheet we just saw. And as the kids matriculate through, the app follows them. So now there'll be middle school next year. We haven't rolled out the middle school just yet. We want to make sure it works with our elementary community first and then we'll have it. A next stop might be special ed families as a next stop as well. So we have different opportunities to deploy this, you know, charter family. So the first step, first stop for us is our elementary community and their exposure to our transportation network and getting some timely communication.
Any questions about the app or how it's been rolled out, or those features? All increasingly possible as more and more of the transportation service gets digitized and we have this kind of information readily available, which again has been a lot of the work that we've been doing in that office over the course of the last several years.
Correct.
That app will be very helpful in the first week of school when parents and principals are getting used to the routes and them settling down and when there's typically more delays as everyone's riding habits become determined. So I'm really looking forward to that, Mark. That will probably be able to eliminate a lot of inquiries even before they're made.
And once we get out of the crawling phase and up to the walking and running, there is a two-way messaging function as well. So, you know, you can be communicating with the dispatcher through the app. This point, a little much as we're starting, but that's a functionality. We have that turned off right now, but as we grow into it, again, that, you know, affording additional communication avenues for our parents.
Which all makes that kind of communication and asking questions, getting questions answered, this is all part of all the ways in which we're making it that much easier for that to happen. Any other questions? That is the last of our information items, which brings us to the agenda items for April 28th. Those first four, land development improvements agreement for the Fountain Hill Elementary School construction projects, sidewalk and parking easements for Fountain Hill Elementary School construction projects, stormwater best practices agreement, and the PPL right-of-way and infrastructure installation again for the Fountain Hill Elementary School and infrastructure installation again for the Fountain Hill Elementary School construction project are those things you had mentioned before. These are just steps with the town that now we're making, or the board is aware of these, of steps that are underway, but all of these things are planned and part of the, that process. And then the other Fountain Hill Elementary School construction project on there is the PlanCon parts G and H, which again are just part of the, getting the paperwork should PlanCon ever exist again. We'll be ready to go.
PlanCon doesn't exist, but we're using the planning template and following that just in case you never know.
Just in case should Harrisburg make contributions to these necessary facilities improvement projects across the Commonwealth. Great thing to advocate for in the midst of budget season with your state legislature, legislators. But should that be refunded, returned in some capacity, we'll have that application ready to go. So that's 4.01 through 4.05, all component parts of the Fountain Hill project. Then we get to 4.06, which is that new playground, Freemansburg Elementary School.
Yeah, these are always fun, exciting. We had the donation we accepted last month from Grace Church in Bethlehem towards Fountain Hill's playground. This is the, the follow-up agenda to actually purchase that playground in combination with the church's donation, PTA contribution and then a district share. We will, we will have a new playground at, at Freemansburg come August for the new school year.
Is it common for the district to contribute towards playgrounds? And the reason I ask is I feel like we've had, we've been down this road before and I don't remember the district contributing to playgrounds.
Yes. So when it comes to playgrounds, we feel like the district owes our schools a minimum something, right? Like there needs to be something there. In the case of Freemansburg, they have something that are, they have two somethings that are very old, outdated and no longer supported. So one of them has some damaged equipment we can't even get parts for. So this is getting us there. So the contribution, maybe 15 years ago, between the PTA and church would get really nice structure. Today, unfortunately, the playgrounds are incredibly expensive. So, you know, the dollars don't go as far for the, the fundraising organizations. So the contribution, the part, when, when PTAs are in the situation where they can, where it's this close, when it comes to the site prep, the, you know, the mulch, the, the leveling the ground, that kind of ground participation, that's where we're, we're making sure we're covering that so that any donation is maximized toward the structure and not like, you know, you know, freight and, you know, kind of the stuff that goes along, but it's not really part of the playground, but necessary. So where we have contributed, it's been that kind of ground prep effort. So. Correct, correct. So for a $19,000 contribution, we're getting a $70,000 structure. So.
Mr. Stein, can you, we didn't see any plans for the playground itself, any, any layouts or anything. Is this going to be an accessible playground with ramps or, or just consideration for special needs or any, any abilities like that?
Yes, the, the playground will be accessible. It's not the style that has the actual ramps that take you from the ground all the way up on and around the structure, but there are, it's accessible in terms of the, the ground, the surfacing, the ground events, the panels available that are not just up high, but there are play events at the ground level for folks to, for kids to engage with.
So the follow-up question then is with the surfacing, are we talking woodchip again or are we going to do some other kind of foam? Just because wheelchair chairs on, on woodchip don't really work well.
The, the woodchips are ASTM certified and they are accessible. Now, you know, can a first grader self-propel in a wheelchair over the surface? Not the easiest thing, but it is fully accessible by all the consumer product safety guidelines and the ADA as far as accessibility is concerned.
So we were following ADA guidelines?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the staff was very adamant about having the structure that supports, there are several IU classrooms in the building. The staff and the lighthouse team at the school were part of selecting, you know, which structures they could afford and what they liked the most. They just picked the colors this week. So there, you know, it was a very staff-focused process, also with an eye towards especially these kids in the building.
That brings us to 4.08, another one, or another item that we had spoken of earlier in the meeting, the transportation management and consulting agreement renewal, that's with Transpar Group. You had mentioned already.
We did. Skip to 4.7, just a.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. 4.07, the athletic field rumor.
That's just a budgeted piece of equipment that we had waiting throughout the course of the year, make sure, cover our bases. And this will help with baseball, softball and aerating our other fields at the Freedom Campus.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
If people have questions about that. And then 4.08 is that Transpar agreement. We talked about if there's anything else about that. Another transportation-related thing is 4.09, we've got bus digital radios.
This is a, another budgeted planned replacement. We're actually changing our technology and going from traditional tower-based radios to cellular push-to-talk radios, if you will. So it's going from, you know, existing technology to a newer technology. And because there are more, you know, annual, you know, access fees for, you know, you know, cell tower service for 150 vehicles, there's an annual cost. So, you know, we analyzed several proposals, two on the traditional radio side and two on the cellular side and recommend the award to FirstNet as kind of the, the, the best five-year total cost of ownership solution. We figure we'll have the technology at least for five years and we didn't want to just take the zero-cost first-year option. Hold on a second, what's that cost after a couple of years? So we wanted to look at the total picture. Now, you'll recall, this was on the finance agenda last month in amongst some things, and we actually pulled it before the previous, the March board meeting. There were some questions from some of the participants and we wanted to make sure everyone had a fair shake, particularly about that five-year cost. So we wanted to give everyone a chance for a best and final, one for the proposals and came to what we feel is the, the best value for the district moving ahead. Having tried out the cellular devices, you know, it was tough for us with the old analog radios with coverage in some parts of our service area. And, you know, we had a, we had some sample traditional radios, digital and, and sample cellular devices being driven around with our bus drivers and the clarity of talking on a cellphone. The, 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 the testing with the company, you know, radio check and someone from Montana clues in, yep, read aloud and clear, you know, so like, just like you're talking across the room with someone. So we're, the, the dispatchers and drivers were very excited about the, the clarity and the, of the cellular. Is now, a lot more coverage than, you know, radio tower on South Fountain goes down and now we're missing coverage. So the, so the drivers, dispatchers were very impressed by the signal quality, the, the clarity, the ease of use. So we ended up heading that direction.
Any questions? All right, I'm quadruple checking, but then that brings us to 4.10, the private transportation contract. These are typical, that we have periodically, just to seed a coverage, right? Anything else? Yeah, we're getting to courtesy of the floor, yes. I didn't know if there was any other, that, no other agenda items, that covers everything for our board meeting. So that brings us to courtesy of the floor. About anything, did you want to? Yeah.
Even in town, at the last meeting, I alluded to the quality of the board now and then and also quality of education. So I'd like to follow up on that with a formal presentation, which I don't have here. This was a submission made to the, to local paper, adding a formal description of what I alluded to last meeting. And fortunately, they did publish it and it made five new enemies and two new friends. So do the math. But anyway. The Pennsylvania Department of Education reports in great detail on academic achievements of each school district and individual schools in Pennsylvania, giving report cards and whether they are making progress toward meeting the goals of the federal No Child Left Behind law. By 2014, all 501 school districts and the schools must meet the minimum adequate yearly progress or AYP guidelines in mathematics and reading. If the district and schools are on track, the education department gives them a green light. In the opinion of the Beth, in the opinion of the Bethlehem Area School District Administration, that it is doing well, an opinion shared by school directors with the exception of two, Loretta Leeson and Judith Dexter. This gives you some insight into the recent 7-2 and on occasion six to three votes in support of the administration bringing down upon the two the wrath and criticism of the board majority, who's right. The state report has two categories. First being schools meeting AYP requirements and schools showing progress toward that goal, a yellow light. The yellow light category covers school districts in need of improvement with eight levels of severity ranging from a first level of warning to two intermediate levels requiring improvement and then five lower levels require corrective action. The lowest levels get a red light. Each school district can drop from level to level if no progress is made from the previous year. The state report on AYP breakdown shows that of the 500 school districts, 452 are meeting AYP's state levels, 24 are showing progress and 25 need improvement. Where is the BASD in this breakdown? In the 2002, 2003 school year, BASD was reduced into a warning status of the, of the lower need for improvement. In the year 2003, 2004, BASD was further reduced to improvement status and again for not showing adequate improvement over the previous year. In 2004 and 2005, BASD was further lowered for improvement to status. Finally, in 2005 and 2006, BASD was again lowered to corrective action, a red light, again for not showing adequate progress of the 500 school districts in Pennsylvania. Only eight are in corrective action. So BASD is among 1.6% of the schools in the state needing corrective action. What does corrective action mean? It means eventually the state can intervene and take over the management of the district, which in fact had happened here. The school districts of Easton and Altona are both in the higher category of schools showing progress, a yellow light. In sharp contrast, the BASD has shown over the last four years a continuous decline. The state guidelines and regulations are applied to all districts and as such, it measures all school districts by the same yardstick. What is awry in the BASD? School District Diane Rowe of the Fellas Committee Meeting of September 11th recommended a merit pay raise for Superintendent Joseph E. Lewis. It was decided to discuss this and then renew his, his contract in the executive session after the curriculum meeting of September 18th. A final decision is to be announced at the general board meeting tonight. My prediction based on history that the vote will be seven to two in favor. The contract of superintendent expires June 7, 2007 and bylaws states that approval or rejection of a new contract must be made 150 days prior to an expiration date. So what is the urgency to make this decision now? Is there a fear that the continuous probing by directors Leeson and, Leeson and Dexter and continual reporting by honest press will bring a negative light on the present administration? If the BASD were a corporation, I as a stockholder and the corporation will certainly demand a stockholder meeting at the CEO of the, of the big corporation. Why, with declining progress over four years, it is ranked in the lowest 1.6% of, of the 500 companies or, or school districts. But I just wanted to let you know, to formalize what I said last. So keep, so keep it up.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Open forum? Yeah. All right, nothing for open forum. We're going to take a two-minute break and we'll be back for the curriculum committee. All right, we're done. All right, we're done.
All right, let's call the curriculum committee meeting to order. First item is courtesy of the floor on agenda items. Any agenda item discussion? Okay, so we'll be moving on to discussion items. First one, 2.01 is revised academic calendar.
So we brought this to you back in March, and we realized that there was a slight error. There was 192 days accounted for and not 190 contractual days. And so the first day of school did not change, the last day of school did not change. But what you see before you is if we were to adjust anything in the beginning and end, it would affect graduation and all of those things. What we adjusted was, we were starting Christmas break on Tuesday, and now we've backed it up to Friday. Right, so the last day of school will now be Friday, the 19th.
This calendar synchronizes a few moving parts. The number of workdays required for staff, the timing of graduation in the beginning of the year, the 990 hours worth of instructional hours that have to be met on any calendar for students to have enough time in school, management of protection against excessive days lost because of snow days. So we believe we're comfortable with extending those two days out and having that break. So I know Mr. Fashionetto was always a supporter of that. The only way we would get in big trouble is if we had a big nor'easter that would go for many, many days beyond four days. But I don't think that's very likely. So we're recommending this change.
Any questions?
So this question comes from me speaking with a couple of my constituents and a couple of elementary school staff members. What is the rationale? I understand why middle school and high school have, we went from the three-hour delay to early dismissal. But what is rationale for providing middle school and high school the time and not elementary school?
So this particular school year, we have very heavily accommodated the elementary school. And in the week prior to report cards being due, we are only, principals may only use that 8:15 to 8:55 time once. And so cumulatively, they have approximately the same amount of time. Now, they have those kiddos all day long, but they have ballpark 20 to 25 kids, depending on the grade level. Some of our middle school teachers have 150 kids. Some of our high school teachers, depending on if it's a marking period long course versus a semester long course, can teach, again, over 100 students in a marking period. So we have been, the morning period of time that is assigned is unique to elementary, and that does not exist at middle school and high school. And we have really been endeavoring to accommodate. And we've been working with Mrs. Ketting from the BEA, and we've all been collaborating about what is the best way to accommodate. So we've been mindful of those elementary teachers. We respect and we admire the time and commitment they put into their comments and preparation for report cards. But we have a different mechanism to support them.
Thank you, that's very thorough, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to 2.02, this is the PDE Comprehensive Plan.
So you probably have seen a comprehensive plan before, come before the school board. This is a requirement of the Department of Education. On an annual basis, you've probably seen the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan from Brockle. You've seen the Targeted School Improvement Plans from the high schools. This one is kind of on steroids for the district level. It requires us to do a very detailed analysis of what is the current state of the district, what is our data, both at the, you know, PSSE Keystone level, demographic data, et cetera. It requires us to set some goals. We have set goals around literacy and math, which are two primary areas of focus. But in lieu of getting into tremendous detail of the comprehensive plan, which really, if you have been, and I know you all have been, but if you've been paying attention to a lot of the things we've been doing over time, it's really reflected in this plan. We're being consistent and true to what we believe in. But one of the core levers that is explained in the comprehensive plan is our commitment to keys to literacy training for our teachers. And I'm going to invite Mrs. Harper to come up and join us. I thought that as we were talking about the comprehensive plan, it might be a valuable time to, yeah, she's going to make you guys do something. It might be a good opportunity to highlight some of the professional learning that we're emphasizing with teachers. So we call this KTL, or Keys to Literacy Training, but among some of us, we've started to call it Keys to Learning Training, because it's really reflecting the cognitive science around learning. And it really reflects, what are the high-leverage, evidence-based strategies that will help students with comprehension and writing and vocabulary? So I'll let Ms.
Not yet, hold, please, on your activity. You're, yeah, okay. Great, you can go to the next slide. Thank you. Okay, so we've talked a lot about our foundational literacy work and our work with our little friends down in K1, 2, 3, and those foundational skills of decoding and learning to write. But as, and as students get older, when they're leaving us, we want them to have disciplinary literacy skills, which are things you continue in college, like you think like a historian, you do a science experiment like a scientist, or things like a mathematician. But in between there, the bridge, if you will, is content area literacy, which is really, how do you access the text across content? So it's not discipline-specific, it's not math-specific or English-specific or social studies-specific. It's good strategies you can use regardless of the text. And so that's really what Keys to Literacy Training is about, looking at that content area literacy. And so you can see, if you stack it like a cake, we're right in that, in that middle. You can go to the next slide, please. So why did we select Keys to Literacy? Well, first of all, it's evidence-based, and there's some of the research that's there. And it's aligned to Common Core State Standards, for us, PA Core Standards. Also, it's consistent routines. And so if you've ever had your kids come home, maybe with different graphic organizers in the past, there's like a thousand you could choose from, that gets overwhelming. And so it reduces our range to some really high-leverage strategies, routines, and graphic organizers that we can use repeatedly. They refer to the key trainers called the Pottery Barn approach. So if you have to paint your room in your house, you're like, I go to the paint store, and there's a thousand different paint chips, right? It's narrowing it down to that, it's all put together for you, right? Here's the color wheel, the color choices that work well together. Same way with the keys routines. Here are the routines that work really well together. And students, because we've narrowed the focus of the routines and the strategies, they can focus on the content of the class, because once you learn the routines, you can use them over and over. So I don't have to take a middle schooler as eight periods in the day. I start out period one with Mrs. Smith, and she wants me to do it this way. And then period two, I go to Mr. Jones, and he has a totally different way of doing it, right? So as a kid, I have to figure out what's happening in that class, in addition to learning math or science or social study. So by training our teachers on the common routines, we don't have to worry about, how does he do it, how does she do it? We're using common strategies across class. So I can focus on the math, or I can focus on the social studies. So this also happens to be an example of a two-column note, which is one of the routines. What do we want our outcomes for teachers? Well, if we, this is an example, this is Bloom's Taxonomy. For those of you not familiar with that, we start, it's our levels of understanding. We start at the beginning with remember, and we go up to create. One is not better than the other. We need to remember things in order to be able to create new things, right? We need to have our knowledge of vocabulary and procedures in order to create a great story. I need to know my grammar and all of that to write a great story. So for our teachers, at the remembering level, we want them to be able to identify those high-leverage strategies in comprehension, vocabulary, and writing. And those are the three keys trainings that we are providing our teachers. We want them to be able to explain why consistent routines are good for our students. We want them, bless you, to select the routine that best fits existing lessons. We want them to think about the prerequisite skills students need to learn the routines. We want them to collaborate with colleagues and select the best routine for an upcoming text. And we want them to design a lesson incorporating multiple KTL routines. So why is Bloom's Taxonomy up there? Because one of the routines and strategies we teach kids is question generation, because that's a high-leverage strategy. So we actually teach kids the different levels of questioning and get them asking questions of themselves, of each other, and of the teacher. Next slide. Okay, now, you're all eager, you have an activity. You have a number of words, all of those words up there, you have bagged before you, so we're going to work with a partner. And just take a minute, put those words into different categories, and you have a post-it, you can label your categories. It's not a competition. Okay. Would someone be willing to share their categories?
We have four different categories. So we have human resources, maintenance, and facilities, curriculum, and then finance.
Okay, did anyone come up with different categories? Okay. So that's something we have students do, is categorize. And that helps with finding main idea, actually, because in a text, authors don't always put a topic sentence at the beginning of a paragraph. And you have to be able to take that information, see what they're talking about, put it together, how would you categorize that? So we teach students how to do that, and also that then turns into often our two-column notes, because our categories become our left-hand headings on the side, and then we can add our notes about them on the right. We also could work in a little vocabulary there, if we wanted to define HVAC, for example, we could work that into our lesson. Here's the next couple of slides, we have some examples of student work that we've collected. This is a fourth grade example of putting together some strategies. So on the left, you see an example of a top-down topic web, which will be, I have another example bigger for you in a minute. But they use that as an organizer, and then wrote, they were talking about different animals. So this one picked Phoenix boxes. And so he had the notes, and then was able to write a pretty detailed essay about it. If you go to the next one, we have a middle school example. Again, this was about a specific text related to Barbara Jordan. So we have our top-down topic web that they took notes. They have two different ways to use the two-column notes. That middle picture is actually vocabulary words that they've got in their notes, they have different things to write about the vocabulary. So part of speech, some synonyms, antonyms, and a sample sentence. And then on the right is a note taker from the text that they then wrote a summary at the bottom. Summarizing is another high-leverage strategy.
Before we go on from this slide, I just want to share, I had the pleasure of walking through some classrooms today with Dr. Quinones over at Northeast. And we have shared with you repeatedly, one of our district goals is having students do, using grade-level skills to do grade-level work. And so this, what you're witnessing here, is one of the best accessories that we can use, one of the things that is creating this accessibility to text. And I was really proud to see in the classrooms that I was going through, them organizing into two-column notes and then summarizing, and they didn't do that for me. I didn't like put out a big announcement, here I come, and show me all the KTL strategies you have. But I would, I would wonder if I had gone into those exact same classrooms a year or two ago, before we were emphasizing the use of KTL, if I would have seen them using the grade-level text. Because today, they just, and it was, this is just normal, this is what we do. We are in the grade-level text, we're accessing it, we're wrestling with it. And that's really, we believe, very important and key to our long-term success. And so we've, Mrs., I don't want to steal your thunder here, but Mrs. Harper is going to share with you the volume of teachers who have been through this professional learning, and there is more to come for all of them. But we're seeing the needle move as we're walking through classes. And just, you know, just that one on the right, very similar is what I saw in the classroom.
The next one, yep. And so, you know, one of the keys to our success has been training administrators first. So this was actually an example of a top-down topic web that Mrs. Miranda had used at Freedom for Keystone Training at the time. And so organizing it for staff members, so that everything was easy to find, they knew what they had to be aware of for training. And so before we get to the next slide, which has some testimonials, to Dr. Leeson's point, having common strategies for students, having a way to help them access the text has really been a game changer. Because in the past, you would give students a text, history teachers aren't trained to be reading teachers. Frankly, high school English teachers aren't trained to be reading teachers, they're trained to be English teachers, right? And so this gives teachers a way to scaffold for students, and a way to help them break down, help students break down texts, and actually teach them how to break down the text, instead of saying, well, we'll just read it, right? So we actually have strategies now. If you go to the next slide, here are a couple testimonials. So students are actually eager when they see the two-column notes. Some of you may have children that do this, they take way more notes than they need to, because they write down everything they've read, right? So for some kids, it's as much about learning how to edit your notes than how to take them in the first place. So that's the other piece with keys, is that it's good for our students who maybe struggle to access the text, but it's also great for our AP kids who just don't know how to take notes, they want to write everything down. So that was a high school teacher. On the right, the fourth grade, we've been having our, our literacy coaches have been helping our teachers get started in creating some scaffolds for the unit test. So graphic organizer, two-column notes, top-down topic webs for students. And so this teacher mentioned the fourth graders loved it, it went very well, and it definitely helped them with the test and provided them great strategies, and we're using them often in class. During one of our coaching sessions, one of the teachers actually said, my students would not have done as well had they not had the KTL routines to use to help them answer the questions. We have an elementary teacher also talking about students increasing their math test scores after using two-column notes throughout the unit. And then this is my favorite, in yellow, the middle school teacher. Says, I like it when students tell me at the start of every lesson, why does every teacher make us write a summary? Or we're always doing two-column notes for all of you. And so, yes, exactly, because that's how we learn. And so that's a good thing, because it shows we're being consistent. And it's, it's not another thing, it's just the way you take notes and learn, right? So I've often will share with the teachers, you know, I'm doing some coursework, guess what? Two-column notes, it's not like another thing, it's just the way you take notes, and it helps. Two column notes. It's not like another thing. It's just the way you take notes and it helps you organize. And then lastly, as Dr. Lisa mentioned, here's a top-down web to illustrate our training to date. And so we started in the 22, 23 school year with our teachers. We actually started the spring of the year before with our administrators. But teachers, 22, 23, we had, at the time, it was 88 teachers. We've had some attrition. But we now have 73 teachers who've just finished in that first cohort, and they just finished the all three training. So they've done comprehension and vocabulary, and this year they did content writing. Then we added the next group where we focused on middle school and fourth and fifth grade teachers from Donegan, Fountain Hill, Freemansburg, and Marvine. They did comprehension, and this year they just had vocabulary. Next year, they will finish out with content writing. And then this year, we brought on the rest of our high school teachers and the rest of the grade four, five teachers. So you can see we get big pretty fast. But we had something like 548-ish teachers this year getting keys training. So it will get smaller again. This was the biggest year with all three groups, and then they will waterfall off. So that's what we've been doing. And good, hopefully, we're seeing stronger results from our, from our students. And they have a good way to access text.
Thank you, Mrs. Harper. I, one of the things, one of the things I really appreciate about the keys to literacy training, whether it be comprehension, vocabulary, or writing, is it is really giving great guidance to teachers about what are the best strategies that are going to give you the most oomph, like your best bang for the buck, right? And so if we, it's encouraging teachers to use what is described as the gold medal strategy is summarizing. That if a kid can successfully write a summary of what they learned, whether it be how they solved the math problem, or how they did, you know, the laboratory experiment, or what they read in the text, if they can successfully write that summary, that is the gold star evidence-based strategy. Now, we have many evidence-based, but like, this is the winner, right? And so it's giving them those small moves of like, let's really encourage and let's support kids in those skills. And let's do it consistently across different curricula so that they are more successful in the long term. So thank you, Mrs. Harper, for your leadership on this.
The other thing I'll just say is we, this presentation emphasized the comprehension strategies with a little vocabulary thrown in. But the, the great thing about them as well is that they layer into each other. So you saw an example of vocabulary, but it was two column notes. And so when writing is introduced, it falls back on the, a lot of the strategies from comprehension you see again. But now with a little twist for writing or vocabulary, a little twist in with the writing. So it's the layering effect. You get that multiplier effect that's really powerful as well. Any questions?
I was really happy to see the comment about the middle school teacher and the students asking, why do we have to do this? Because what I see in this, this base, this, this keys to literacy is transferability to not just learning about academic subjects, but learning about everything. And as a, as an athlete, as a musician, I mean, I can't tell my students, just go practice. I actually have to give them tools to be a better practicer on their own. So this is really, I'm just so pleased to know that we're giving kids tools for life as well as learning. I mean, to, you know, anyone who doesn't know how to cook, it's because didn't, people didn't give them structure that onions don't go with peanut butter, usually, you know? So, so I would just, yeah.
Joan Sardina is.
But, or pickles with ice cream, whatever. So, so I think that, that giving, giving young minds a format, not just for understanding and summarizing things, but also approaching a problem. And, and being able to knock it down into the nuts and bolts. And, you know, this is, this is also gateway to problem solving and to also being critical thinkers. I mean, this is, thank you. This is wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Just to tack onto that, another thing, just to note on this slide, this isn't just like a fourth grade thing or a seventh grade thing that over the course of seventh grade, you're like inundated with it. But I just really appreciate, and this is a huge undertaking, because as you see, the numbers rise as you're getting more and more grades involved in this. But this is something that students will get used in dialed as they move their way up. Obviously, it's going to look different in 12th grade than it does in fourth. But this is a consistent method that they're seeing again and again, as they transition from elementary to middle, as they transition from middle to high school. And that, just again, to sort of piggyback on your comments, is really, really thoughtful and incredibly important, too.
I just have a quick comp. I'll just take detail on that.
Okay. No, I was just going to say the, even at the college level, you know, when I teach my students how to analyze qualitative data, which is like a text, this is precisely what I teach them to do. I mean, we use different words and different, you know, different sort of concepts, but it's the same strategy. So it's a very consistently useful way of thinking about how to approach complex things.
Since we're all talking academia and education, I just want to say information literacy. Bloomsburg taxonomy, that's what we teach as well. Mapping, breaking things down to the most commonest, simplest denominator so that the topic is not so overwhelmed, they're not overwhelmed with the topic. So like you said, it transcends into higher edge and everything. So it's a good, it's a good technique. Thank you.
I have three questions. But I did just want to tag this on. There's been a lot of talk nationally about why young men of color, specifically young African-American men, are not going to school, not going to college. And a lot of folks in academia talk about, and particularly, they were African-American folks in academia, talking about students coming in within the past few years not having some of these skills. So to hear us talking about this, like that, that, that moves me because that we're giving kids key, we're giving kids keys to learning. How about that? But my three questions are, in the start of your presentation, you'd gone over the evidence base or evidence that supports the, the program here. But I noticed that the resources there were all kind of a little, I think the most recent one was 2010. Is there any concurrent research that has been, that brings this up to date?
So I can pull some for you. Basically, it's the same with foundational skills. We've known what works for a long time and things are being replicated. But I haven't seen anything come out that says, oh, no, here's, summarizing doesn't work. For example, like, it's sort of settled that summarizing is a gold standard strategy. Yeah.
I believe that. The second question that I have, second and third question, they're both related. And I usually end up asking variations of this question, particularly when you all and Mr. Motto present. I'm curious to know what these keys to literacy training looks like for our differently-abled learners. So what does, what does the, what does this look like for special ed? Like, what does, what does this look like in terms of making that accessible?
So if you go back to this third slide. Yeah. So for example, this is a two-column note. So for some of my students who need heavily scaffold, I can hand them this. For other students who need less of a scaffold, I can remove, it's only partially filled in or their sentence steps, as an example. For other students, I've got the details, but I don't have the categories, and they have to come up with categories. I could reverse it, give them the categories and not the details. And for other students, I give them a blank piece of paper and say, make your two-column notes. After, obviously, we've taught them how to do that. So it is very scalable in terms of the amount of scaffolding that you give a student or not. But it's also the routines of the way of approaching the text, right? So to even talk about a lot, there's, there's things that obviously is not in the presentation, but things like text structure, teaching kids that text has structure. And you have to look for things like headings and things. Sometimes it's just being really explicit about what they're looking for as opposed to here, go figure out.
So to summarize, it, it, it allows, this allows for the teacher to differentiate the needs as best, and they are being taught through the different professional development opportunities to do so. Okay.
Yes, and all the teachers, not just the special ed teachers are taught how to do it. Yeah.
Good special education instruction is good instruction.
Correct.
That's good. So then the last part that I have is outside of the context of this presentation, but just overall. So it's nice to be able to do this. But if you are the only teacher in the class and you have three kids with three different learning levels, and you have another kid who's not diagnosed yet, but has like a really serious behavioral situation going on, or just had had like a really serious traumatic event, how, how are we linking these keys to literacies to the work that we're doing with restorative practices and social emotional learning? Like, how are we, how are we marrying the two that really possibly could live on two separate islands? Because we're big on educating the whole child, like, how, how does this, how does this come together?
Routines and structures are very comforting to students. The absence of routines and structures can sometimes cause anxiety. And the, and the less structure, the more anxiety. So in a sense of giving students templates, models, structures that they can add to, take from, that regularity, that structure, really does measure as one of the key trauma-informed strategies. When students go into a classroom and they're sort of defensive and thinking, I don't know how to make sense of this. I don't know how to organize this. I don't know how to enter into this. That leads to behavioral issues. That leads to a lack of confidence. That leads to a lack of academic success. So just like an early student, like a kindergarten or a first-grade teacher learns to access the information of school after having the teacher really establish routines and structures, it's comforting to that student. So it's in the general answer to that. As far as the, the bridge and the connection specifically beyond just providing comfort and structure, I would have to let Mrs. Harper and the experts look at that.
Yeah. And I think, so for example, we have in our training, special ed teachers who are case managers rather than, you know, they don't teach a self-contained class. And I know from seeing exit tickets from trainings, one said, you know, I really want to either think about, I can't remember if it's a top-down webs or two-column notes, to set up my I E P meetings with students, to use that as the structure. So the kid would, you know, the students would know the routine already, right? The, the structure. To Dr. Silva's point, the routines and structure do help our students. That's one of the big things is to not have to worry about, okay, now I'm in fourth period. She likes me to take my notes over on the computer, but this one likes me to, I'm supposed to have a notebook with, set up this way, right? So it's, it's, it helps to level some of that, the stress of that. The other thing, not specifically to that, but I want to mention is now that we have common curricula as well, we are encouraging our teachers to work smarter, not harder. So let's work together, you know, on unit one. I'll make the top-down web. You do the two-column notes, what have you. So we have a common starting place. So the differentiation is easier, too, because we already have it. We also encourage our teachers, this is a good tip. If you're going to have them take two-column notes, you take the two-column notes and see how easy or difficult it is, because some text is more challenging than others, and we just assume it's going to be easy. And it's, it's not always. So we encourage them to do it first.
I appreciate that. And maybe, maybe my misunderstanding, I, I might be putting a little more into it than, than what's being attended. But what I'm hearing is that that's an unintended consequence or like, like, oh, well, these things, you know, because we're providing this is good. What I'm also thinking, knowing how things work in my world and after school, but also with the experiences I've had working with children in a school setting, is that when we're so married to, this is what this should look like, even with the different ways it should look like this. Because what I'm really hearing is that we're standardizing a lot of practices, which is not necessarily a bad thing. But when I'm hearing that, I'm also knowing that there are some folks who are so tied to structure that any deviation from such is a problem for them. And if, like, my house caught on fire last week or my dad left, I don't care about two-column notes.
Well, right. And so this doesn't absolve people of being trauma-informed and using restorative practices, right? Like, we have to approach the kid with what they need. So to that end, I, I don't, I don't know that a teacher would say, well, you, your house burned down, but you need to turn in your two-column notes. You know what I mean? I think we still approach them in, in a compassionate way. But I also think, speaking because of where, you know, the work that you do and others and our E S L teachers or special ed teachers with a caseload, this also helps them support students in a common way in that before it was like, you're bringing an assignment. I need help with this. What does that teacher want? What's the expectation? How are you supposed to do it? Then they have to track it down versus, oh, I know what, we're all on the same page, so we can help you access what you need to do.
So I just want to make sure we're being really direct in answering your question. So keys to literacy is focusing on literacy, right? We have leader in me, restorative practices, trauma-informed practices that we embed in our classrooms every day. I would, it would be a false claim to say that beyond the routine that this has trauma-informed practices interwoven into it. Dr. Silva is correct. Him is correct. But it's really focused on the literacy piece. Just like we talk so heavily at elementary about it's so important to teach the kids to read by grade three. Well, after grade three, this is what becomes important in the literacy space is reading to learn. And so beyond that, I wouldn't say, like, the, the trauma-informed practices, the restorative practices, those are the things that relationally we will do and in our classroom practices we will do in addition to everything else. But this is the literacy focus. I, I don't, I want to, I don't want to make a false claim to you.
Well, thank you for that, because that, that nuance does clear it up. And I guess what I'm saying is that I recognize that those are, those are different things. That's why I said, well, they could typically live on different islands. I know that we have tried to infuse, fuse them together. I'm just curious to know. And if that, like, well, no, this is just literacy, literacy is literacy. That's, if that's the answer, that's fine. I guess my pushback would be is that what are ways, if it's, if it doesn't come in, in the box that this comes out of? What are ways that, what are things that we're doing that infuses those things because they still count? Like, yes, this is how we're teaching literacy. This is how, this is how we're doing that. But then, and while you're doing this, please make sure that these things are like, and maybe so it's not this, but like, what does professional development look like that are saying, all this goes together?
Yeah. And I, I also think it's, to your question before about like a rigidness of a teacher. For example, a Venn diagram is not one of the routines that we're going to learn in key literacy. That does not mean you can't use a Venn diagram, right? Like, it does not say you're not allowed to use other things. It's just saying, if you have 100 to choose from, how about we pick these four or five, and then you add something as needed if it's, fits the need better? So in that sense, I don't think we're adding to a trauma because you did not do it exactly, right? That's a, that's a teaching conversation in a.
And I will, this is kind of the one side of the, the house, right? The, the instruction, the literacy, the learning. The other piece, which is running simultaneously and concurrently, is the restorative practices, the trauma-informed. It's how well do you know your students? How well do you know what's going on in their lives so that you can support them in that way? It's approaching them in the right manner. It's interacting with them. It's recognizing that I know that kid, and I know that when they, they put their head down, they need a minute, but I'm going to check in with them later. And it's just being responsive in lots of different ways. It's greeting your kids at the door and recognizing that when there's a problem with that child, that's not their typical response in the morning time or in the afternoon. Then we need to check in. We need to connect them with different resources. So those things happen concurrently. But as it relates to this, for instance, doing the 51st math problem, not the best strategy. Being able to summarize how you solved and really solidifying that is the evidence base. So it's, it's meant, it's, it's helping our teachers to say, these things are good. Let's do more of this because they're evidence-based. But some of the other things, they're okay, but let's emphasize the best instructional strategies to help our kids. And like we say about reading by grade three, that's our biggest equity strategy, is getting all kids the skills that they need in addition to, you know, our community schools providing what we, they need, et cetera. But it's the other half of the coin.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I don't want to continue on this. I was just hearing some things, and I think they're being a little polite, and you can cut me off if I'm wrong. It, this doesn't, this is keys to literacy. It doesn't embed trauma-informed or restorative practices. I mean, this is your basic tier-one support that everybody gets to learn to read. I think the fact that our staff and our teachers and our instructional aides are trained in restorative practices and in trauma-informed and building relationships, which Dr. Lee started to touch on, like, that's where you're going to get those things to hop on top and know that now's not the time to hammer down, we got to do two-column notes today, because you know this kid's upset because he's off because you built the relationship. So I think those two things working together are what's getting at what you're looking for. But you could replace keys to literacy with first in math or whatever program it is or social studies. If you don't have the relationship, then you're not going to have all those other things. And that's, I think, what our staff works so hard to build relationships and to meet kids where they're at and understand all those outside factors that.
that we ideally say they leave at the door, but of course they don't, that are going on. So I think they work together, but I don't think any program that they're gonna present for academic stuff is going to have trauma-informed built into it. Like, that's the separate approach is that you rely on good teachers like we have to do and just build in their classrooms.
And that's the comprehensive plan. And it's smart to emphasize literacy in your comprehensive plan because it touches all subjects, all levels. So you've seen in this committee us build that out from kindergarten, from the very first moment. I don't know if you remember, we had a similar presentation years ago of what it takes to be successful at a very young age with your foundational skills, all the way through now in twelfth grade, how to organize your physics notes and your two-column notes and how to summarize complex problems. It has a consistency of literacy approach that is our comprehensive plan. Uh, so thank you for organizing it that way, Dr. Lewis.
All right. So we'll be moving on to information items. Um, three point zero one. Very timely cellphone presentation, so go for it.
So uh, um, brewing in the local, state, national, probably even international conversation is the appropriate use of cell phones, social media, what is developmentally appropriate? And so this evening, we have brought for you part one of two. So more to come in May. Uh, but this is a presentation that I'm gonna turn over to uh, Ms. Nicole Buhanah, who is one of our outstanding assistant principals over at Brockle. Um, we're very lucky to have her and she has been working with the team of Tracy Herner and Mark James and our building administrators to talk about, again, what is the evidence around what's developmentally appropriate for children as it relates to cell phones, social media, et cetera? And so tonight, we're going to really emphasize what do we know about that space? And then we're going to um, come back to you in May to talk about, you know, some of the procedures that we have in our schools and that we're recommending for our schools. So I'll turn it over to Nicole.
Thank you. So for this presentation, we focus on synthesizing some of the research that we've done on the topic and then also discussing the impact that it has on students, whether it's their mental health or academics. And then as well as some tips that we have for parents moving on, moving on. So from likes to limits, helping kids thrive in the social media era. One of the things that we have here, we have the different topics. We have social media and teens. We have critical development windows and then we have impact in schools, um, and then some tip for parents. And so when we're talking about the social media use in teens, we really focus on the highlights of all the research. And so we look at children and av- on average, receive two hundred and thirty-seven notifications a day. And over half of teens are using their phones overnight. So they're using it either on YouTube, either they're gaming or they're on social media of some kind. Four and a half hours is the average amount of time that teens spend just on social media alone, which is a concern because the surgeon general in his advisory, he said that any child that spends more than three hours has, faces double the risk of having mental health concerns, specifically any symptoms of anxiety and depression. So then we looked at data from FBI. And so the FBI is saying that at any given time, there's over five hundred thousand predators that are online and they're trying to make contact with children. And so they often pose as, you know, twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds just to meet them online, have conversations and then try to meet them in person. And forty percent of students, this was a nationwide survey, forty percent of stu- of children in grades four to eight said that at some point they had chatted with someone, a stranger, online in some capacity. And forty-one percent of teens with the highest use of so- social media. So that's not even the students that are four-point-eight hours. That's above the four-point-eight, more than two hundred and thirty-seven notifications a day. They reported their mental health when we're looking at the correlation, that their mental health was either poor or very poor. So we're focusing on two areas of development. So we're looking at brain development in these, at this age, and we're looking at the identity formation. So when we look at the brain development, adolescent brain is highly effective to and sensitive to any kind of social feedback. It's why we see students who get really addicted to social media, to the likes. They get addicted to other, you know, whether someone is reposting what they shared, whether someone is looking at what they shared, how many views do they have? On the other side of it, we have the identity formation. So when they're excessively using social media or they're online for long periods of time, it disrupts their natural identity. So they're no longer trying to figure out who they are. They're more likely trying to figure out what other people want them to be and then trying to become that. And so that's a big concern. So those two things are one of the main reasons that it leads into all of this research and what we're seeing. So then we have Jonathan Haidt and he's the writer of The Anxious Generation. He's also written a couple of other books. But his, we have a, a short clip because he, he has done a lot of talks, but there's a short clip here that really talks about the emphasis of when mental health issues really rose in students and in children. And it really wasn't, you know, as we all say, like it was COVID, it really started much, much earlier than that. If we watch the clip, we'll be able to see what he states there.
So backstory to the really dramatic change that happens between twenty-ten and twenty-fifteen. There's never been a social transformation as fast as this one. So this is the graph, this shows technology adoption. And, you know, when radio comes in, there's always a period when everyone seems to be getting it. So the curve was very, very sharp until it gets to ninety, you know, ninety percent. So radio came in very fast, color TV came in very fast. I'm showing you this because I didn't realize until I found this graph that the internet came to us in two distinct waves. And the first was amazing. So we got personal computers in the early eighties, but what can you do with them? WordPerfect, you know, WordStar, whatever it's called. Um, but then once the internet comes in, wow, the internet is incredible. And now there's really a reason to get a computer. And do you remember how we all thought that this was gonna be like the best thing ever to happen to democracy, right? And this was gonna be the best thing ever to happen to education, like, wow, this is gonna be a golden age. The end of history, endless progress and prosperity. But then the second wave comes in, social media, which begins around twenty, uh, around two thousand and four, all platform, major platforms, and the smartphone. Now, the smartphone is adopted faster than any technology in human history. Um, in twenty-ten, most kids didn't have one and by twenty-fifteen, they did. And that's, I believe, why mental health plummets around the world between twenty-ten and twenty-fifteen. We went from this, a childhood where kids were out on their own, you know, in the nineteen-eighties, it was considered just normal for a nine-year-old kid to ride around on a bicycle with an extra terrestrial in his basket. That was just what kids did. But by twenty-fifteen, that had become impossible because this is childhood today, a child sitting alone with a device. This decimates their social life. Again, time use surveys, how do Americans spend their time? How much time do you spend with your friends uh, in a typical, uh, on a typical day? And as you see, young people spend a lot of time with their friends until twenty-twelve. I mean, what else are they gonna do? Older people, we're married, we have jobs, we're not hanging out with our friends all day, but you know, fifteen to twenty-four, hang out with friends until you all get iPhones. And then you stop hanging out with friends. And here again, I want to point out, twenty-nineteen was before COVID. Twenty-twenty was collected after COVID began. Do you see the COVID effect? I don't. Because technology had already caused American children to be socially distanced before COVID arrived. Now, obviously, COVID decimated, it was bad for many kids. But what I'm pointing out is that in terms of their sociality, on average, the decline wasn't any bigger than it was the year before. And even if they're with their friends, they're not really with their friends. And it's not just the teenagers who are living this way. This is a video someone sent me last week, a video from TikTok. A father was very proud of his son. Look at the amazing things that his son can do. Watch this. He just sits there, he can play a video game, he can build a, you know, a Minecraft thing. Now imagine the boy's brain hours a day doing that. That's gonna change neural development. And we give our kids smartphones at very, very young ages. It keeps them quiet. It entertains them. We can do our work. A friend just sent me this in his child's daycare. They have toy iPhones, toy iPhones, so the babies can do what mom and dad do. And then this is something that you'll find on the internet. Uh, this is a child in China, presumably. Um, and he's he's been spiking all day long. He, his nervous system is rewiring the brain, spiking. He can't stop. It's very exciting to him. Imagine doing this to children for the whole childhood.
He goes on to state that a lot of the things that we see now in regards to our concerns with children and like ADHD and mental health concerns, anxiety, um, a lot of that has to do with all the stimuli that they're receiving from a very young age. And so we start looking at the impacts that social media has in schools. And so when we look at interpersonal conflicts, the majority of interpersonal conflicts in a school setting occur, they start on a cellphone. It's either something that was messaging that was happening prior to school. It's either something that's happening during school to meet up. Those are, that's really where it starts. Um, the aftermath of that is also on cell phones, because if someone recorded something or if there's some kind of video, it's all getting posted and then um, things that students or children are sharing that really impacts them, now it's trying to go back and and find ways to help them get past that and then also if we can remove it. Um, the other piece is academically, the distraction that it causes in a classroom, because if we go back to those two hundred and thirty-seven notifications that they get on average in a day, if that phone is buzzing, whether you're hearing it or not, if it's in your pocket and you sense the buzzing, you're tempted to now look at your phone or you're, or they're spending the rest of the time in that class period trying to figure out who texted me, who messaged me, what's happening that I'm not aware of. So a lot of that affects their academic and their engagement as well. And then when we look at attendance, when we do um, student attendance improvement plans with students who are chronically absent, one of the things that we ask is, what is the reason that you're late to school? And typically, it's, I'm not sleeping at night. Well, why are you not sleeping at night? What are you doing? I'm on my phone or I'm gaming or I'm on YouTube or something of that nature. So it's affecting their attendance as well. So when we put together some tips and some information for parents, one of the things that we shared was setting some boundaries. So having some screen time limits, meaning parents can set, you know, whatever time limit they feel. Is it that the Wi-Fi goes off at nine o'clock? Is it that the phone is put, is stored in a different room at night? Whatever parents feel comfortable with. Device-free zones. That could be like, an easy one would be during meal times or things of that nature where no one has their phone out. Having behavior expectations. So not just freely giving a phone, but actually saying, you have a phone, these are the responsibilities that go along with having a phone. Jonathan Haidt actually talked about delayed use of social media, so not giving a child a small, a smartphone until the ages of fourteen or fifteen. And then obviously for the, for safety concerns, if you have a child that walks, you want to be able to contact them. The suggestion is then using a flip phone or something where it's just meant to make calls. Then we have monitoring and safety tools. A lot of students aren't aware of the privacy settings. So they sign up for apps and things of that nature. They're not aware that it's collecting their data. They're not aware that it can track their location wherever they are. And then if someone taps into that, then they can track their location. So having those conversations. Um, the parent engagement piece is just having candid conversations with children about what, how to use a cellphone responsibly, what are these apps? Making sure that we know and we're aware of what the apps are and, and what the use is for. And then the next piece is modeling those healthy habits. So if we're saying meal times is, is a no-free zone, well, then we also have our phones away. And then we're engaging in activities outside of cell phones and technology and just doing things maybe as a family or a different, so that children can also learn that there's other ways to enjoy yourself that aren't on technology or cell phones. And so when we're looking at our journey at BSE when it comes to cell phones, so we have some building-specific data. So freedom started about three years ago, there are cellphone restrictions. And liberty started two years ago with their ninth grade, with their um, freshman center. And then middle schools implemented cellphone restrictions this year. Now, district-wide, we've engaged in committee work for the past two years. And so we've engaged with various groups to just gain feedback, whether it's from parents, students, staff, administrators, um, community members. The other piece is this year particularly, we collaborated with other schools and districts who were comparable to ours across the nation, who have implemented either bans or restrictions. And then just to see what were, how were they implementing it and what was their feedback and how was it going for them? The other piece is that we also explored at length what the research said. So a lot of this, this presentation is a synthesis of a lot of research that's been done over the course of the year and how it impacts mental health and academics for children. Um, we've done a lot of walkthroughs across the district, especially at the secondary level, just to see what it looks like with the current restrictions that have been implemented and we've collected a lot of that data. And then for next month, our goal is to come back with some recommendations for district-aligned guidelines.
So as you are all aware, this has been, again, in the news repeatedly, probably hear something in the news every single week about this, but um, I'd like to thank Tracy, I'd like to thank Nicole, I'd like to thank Mark James um, for their work on this because they really have um, in addition to the what we do and the how we do it, they've really emphasized and researched the why. Why are we doing what we're doing? And so um, next month, we will return with some more uh, BSE-specific recommendations that we would like to present to you.
I, I, I saw Rea first.
Um, the cellphone policy, I remember my son was at Nichman seven years ago and he couldn't, he wasn't allowed to take his cellphone in the classroom. And that was seven years ago. They had to put it in their lockers. So isn't that still the case at Nichman Middle School? Because he couldn't wait to get to high school because he knew that he could have the cellphone in high school and he didn't have to lock it up in the locker. Isn't, but at Nichman, isn't that the case right now? Seven years ago, that's what it was. Am I right or wrong? Well, I know I'm right because that's, that was my son. He was there.
At the time, it was. Um, and I remember I was a teacher there at that time. So yes, it was. Right now, the restrictions are in place. And so I'm, I'm not certain if the restriction right now is to say that it has to be in the locker. I know that the restriction is that it shouldn't be out during academic times. And so that's what's currently in place.
So I, I appreciate this presentation. I've been on this kick for over two years now, probably. Um, I, I think this is great information. I hope we can, I don't know, have some, maybe a health lesson in, in our schools or um, at PTO meetings, maybe somebody makes the rounds, because I think this is important data for parents to see and especially some of those charts that um, were in the video, I think are really powerful. Cause we do, we blame it on COVID and it, it wasn't. I mean, this was long before COVID. Just my hopes for next month, what we see, is that there are no cell phones in our schools. High school, I understand, is a different story, but classrooms is not enough. It's the hallways, it's the cafeteria, it's off and away or in a locker, in a backpack, whatever it is, but walking down the hallway is not okay with a cellphone during the academic day, in my opinion. Um, in the cafeteria, the cellphone is not okay during the academic day, in my opinion. I know last year at East Hills, it was a tough year with fights. Um, I had two kids there at the time. This year, they've implemented this policy of no phones. And I know it's lax, because I text my kid and he gets back to me within a half hour usually. Um, and I do that just to test him on a yell at him at night. Um, but it is way down. And I don't know if that's across the board, but it sure feels like it. Um, the social media um, fights, the TikTok, that kind of stuff is, is way down from last year. Um, he's commented, it feels better, like the culture is better without it. I just, I don't see a reason why we're negotiating with kids under the age of fifteen to use a cellphone in school. And I will not vote for any kind of policy or guideline that allows them in school. High school, I understand, is different. These kids are respons- responsible. They're older. Um, they drive to school, they have jobs, they need phones, after-school sports, things like that. But when you're talking K to eight, there is no reason a student needs a cellphone. We provide them with a device that connects to the internet that they can do any little fun thing that Mr. James can cook up, that I know he loves to do to kind of engage kids in technology. So I will be a hard sell on anything that allows a phone to be out and on, like openly, without that being a discipline referral um, during the school day. And, and that's just me. And that, I don't know, I, I talk to people from other districts through different activities my kids are in or just different places um, through PSBA and things, and people are shocked that our kids can use their phones during the day. They're like, no, if we see a phone, we take it. It's in the office. Um, some, some places go as far as parents have to come and pick them up, which I think is probably a little extreme. But, yeah, I just, that's just me. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I have been on this for years and it is just, we should not negotiate with kids on we should not negotiate with kids on when they can use their phones in school. We should tell them when, and the answer is not at all. I'm done.
So Mr. Fashionetto, I, I theoretically, not even theoretically, I from my heart agree with you. Uh, Ms. Wuhan, what a lovely, I mean, just from the look of it, it was a really good presentation. That was really good. Um, I think we have a bigger issue at play societally though. And until we deal with that, because I hear you and I also hear parents who say, you will take this phone from my child's hands. And that's, 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 that's an issue that we need to resolve. And some of it is merited. When I worked at Brockle with three administrative assistants, and if something was going on, a parent could not get somebody at the office. Not that they weren't doing their work, but the problem was they were doing their work. And I think if we're, if we're going to implement a policy where students, which I agree, like I fought my son tooth and nail, almost literally about him getting a cellphone. And he's a 10th grader at Liberty now. And that, and honestly, it was so detrimental to him that I'm still disappointed that we allowed it to happen. But if we're doing that, we then need to, it, it not only policy wise, but practice is why I change things up. We need to have not, we need to, we have to differentiate work of our, of our secretaries. If we're going to do that, then that means we have to have an operator at every school answering a phone every time it rings. Because if something happens and a parent can't reach their kid, that's on us. So I, I wholeheartedly like, it shouldn't be good, but then we're going to have to, we, we owe that to the parents. We owe that to the district. We owe that to the teachers to make sure that they can get somebody when they want to call that school. Cause that's for the, I called the school and nobody answered. Yeah, but also like they were fixing your child's, you know, bloody cut on their elbow. So, yeah.
Thank you so much for the presentation as well. Um, I am in total agreement with Mr. Fashionetto. Um, it, it's very frustrating for, for, as a parent. When my daughter can go into one classroom and you know, the, the phone has to go in the shoe caddy. But then in the next classroom, she's allowed to listen to music on her AirPods while she's doing her, her math work. It's like, there's no reason. I, I agree with you that then there has to be, God forbid that there's an emergency. There has to be a way to get through to someone at the school. But every single one of us in this room went through school without a phone and we're all still here. So, um, and unfortunately if parents don't like it, then I think parents have to make some tough choices. But I am a hundred percent in favor of a no cellphone policy.
Okay. Um, I wanted to piggyback on what, uh, Mr. Lozzy was saying with the societal issue. There's also been a lot of research now about adults addiction to social media and the number of, of hours that we lose of our lives to scrolling every day in the doom scrolling and how it affects our sleep and our own mental health. Chris Hayes just published a, a book about, um, I had to look it up because I, I, um, it's on my want to read list. But he's talking about how it's attention is, you know, we're so hungry for attention and external validation that that we're, we're, we're not even paying attention to the present. And so if we keep getting all of these shiny distractions, we won't have any memory. So if, if we're not being able to be fully present at that birthday party, you know, five years from now, it's like, yeah, they, they came to your birthday. I don't remember because you were in your phone. And so this is, I mean, I keep thinking, when I, when I was, um, thinking about Chris Hayes' theory, we were thinking about, I was thinking about back when smoking was cool. And then we learned that smoking is bad. And now we understand that smoking is, is not a good thing to start. Um, and same thing with trans fats. And you know, so it just seems like, you know, we kind of have to go through this circle of new technology and kind of go, woo, unintended consequences. Yeah, here we are. And so I think that we as a community, as a nation, as, as a human race, have to understand that this technology has impacted our lives in, in a very unhealthy way across the board. And you know, if, if we don't model better behavior for our kids, that's not going to change either. So I mean, you know, maybe the new status symbol is not having a cellphone. Maybe it's having a dumb phone or a flip phone, excuse me. But you know, it, it really, it, it matters that we really think hard about our own addictions now. And, and, and let that also be our guide to what our kids are going to be in their future.
I'm just wholeheartedly seconding and thirding the comments that are coming over here. I'll also be hard pressed to support anything that doesn't fully get rid of, of phones in our middle schools and think seriously about drastically limiting in their, them in the high schools. We see kids at the college level and it kills me that my students, who are very close to being out in the world on their own, can't pull away. Um, attention, so the things we've been talking about today, to write a summary, you can't do that in 25 second blitz. You have to focus on that and you can't if you're getting 237 notifications or if those are coming through it and it's so fast that if you're not on it, then you're going to be overwhelmed the next time you check. Um, so that's one of the things we're tasked with. The other thing is the, the reward structure of sort of scrolling and clicking onto the next thing. Works one way with my brain or our brains, where our brains are developed. It works a totally different way with a developing brain, which is kind of something we have to keep in mind. Um, and the only other thing, just to piggyback on the fight that you had with your 10th graders, the fight most of us have had with our kids. Comments, I, I watched a, an interview with, um, Jonathan Hain last night, just to get me all ready for this evening's meeting. Um, but one of the points that he made is yes, we have advice for parents. Yes, we have advice for ourselves and for our own kids. But this is very much a collective action kind of challenge because to say to any one kid, you've got to dial it off. And then everybody else is somewhere they are not is really hard. But we as a school district are in a position to say collective action problem, collective action solution. All hundreds of kids, guess what? Nobody's getting notifications because all the phones are off. And that we're kind of uniquely positioned to be able to do something like that. So just for where I stand on this, I, we've been kicking it around for a bit. And I'm just, would feel very strongly to see us in, again, a unique position. There are not many entities like this that can sort of with one swoop, get hundreds of kids offline. You're not missing anything because guess what? None of your friends are online either. And so like, write your summary. We, we need to see the, the outline that you're doing for this. Um, it's just a unique position that we're in and I, I want us to take that sort of position seriously.
Or follow, real quick. Um, I would also love to see what, um, Mr. Rupture would have to say about how cellphone limitations in school districts in other states like Florida, California and other areas have actually impacted campus safety overall. Um, and I'm just looking at, um, oh, I don't know. This is campus safety online, you know, and which states have already banned cell phones? And how is that impacting the overall statistics of safety? Thank you. If it's okay. Um, no, and I think this relates back to one of the issues we talked about at the last curriculum committee meeting and the, about the inability of, um, students that even at our level to be able to read a book. I mean, it requires sustained attention and, and you know, and it's not just, I mean, having sustained attention, you can develop the habit to do that. And it's really interesting that my students, you know, and my students who've, some of them are graduates of BASD that, you know, they'll say, I just can't, I don't, I can't do it. I don't know how to do it. And you know, and I say over and over again, you, you have to practice. You can't, you know, this is, but it's really is a lot harder if you're wired from a very early age to everything's boom, 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 boom. And you know, everything's in, in 30 second increments. And so no wonder they can't read. And you know, and it's, I know Ms. Harper talked about, you know, reading novels, but you know, I don't assign novels. I just, I assign other texts and they can't read them, you know? And so I, I don't think, I think it's less about the curriculum at the high school level and more about cell phones, you know, quite frankly.
Yeah, just a couple of follow ups. One, Ms. Wuhan, thank you so much. This is not directed at you. You're just the person in the chair. Um, but I love the education piece that we need to have first and commenting on Mr. Lozzy. Like this doesn't happen overnight. Like this takes education to the parents and the students and the families. We just don't say on day one in September, we're going to start giving kids, you know, detention and taking phones away. Obviously all our offices are staffed during the day and sometimes it's hectic and the candidates are phones. And that's, you know, it is what it is. But I'm not advocating that kids can't bring phones in a building. Um, they just should be off and away and somewhere out of sight. Obviously, you know, things can pop up. Somebody may have to send a text and say, hey, you know, change of plans. My game is canceled, whatever. And I, but I think that's something that we can have a protocol in place of, can I go to the office and make a phone call? Um, can I, whatever it is. And that's what it's going to take a lot of work to get some kind of policy together on this. Um, but the, uh, you hit on the educational piece to families and what this impact is where this presentation we had tonight comes in of why we're moving this way. And obviously we're not going to yank phones out of hands and some kids will cooperate and some will not. And there's ways to deal with that. But we have to have some kind of teeth for teachers to be able to enforce a policy, knowing that everybody from the board of the administration have their back or the whole thing's useless. And that's why you see, put it in the caddy, listen to music, just don't play this game. And we're all over the place because everybody's just trying to do what works in their room because there's no guidance from the top. And that's what we need to do. And that's what you all started and I really appreciate that.
I appreciate the different perspectives, um, because you are very, you're very much representing how parents feel. We, we've shared not this identical presentation, but a similar presentation to pack the parent advisory council. And so you hear both perspectives. You hear some of the parents saying like, nothing, like let's all band together as parents. We're not giving our kids smartphones. And then there's the other, um, perspective of, um, some parents have really genuine anxiety about not being able to get in contact with their child. Um, and, uh, there's not a lot in between. It's kind of a very polarizing topic. Um, it's polarizing in the news. It's polarizing in our community. And so, um, next month we'll come back and we'll have a little bit more for you, but thanks for your feedback.
Just a question about the makeup of the committee. You said the committee's been around for two years. Who, is there board representation on that committee?
No, it's been an internal committee.
So then to follow up with that, with the makeup that, the reason why I'm asking this is that I would be curious to know the direct input of different types of classroom teachers on as to getting the feedback of that. I just would be curious to know that. So I can take that answer offline, but I'd like to know who, who all is on that. Not exactly who all, but like the makeup of the committee.
Sure. It's teachers, administrators, uh, the building level, the district level, um, getting, we've gotten parent perspective.
Yes, I just want to recommend one more book. It's, it's titled distracted, why students can't focus and what you can do about it. And so it's not just, um, cell phones, but also computers and tablets and so forth. And there is a, there's a, um, there is a chapter titled in favor of a ban.
Thank you. Any other?
We'll save it for next.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like it's good. This is a great topic. It's really important. Um, all right. So we're moving on to agenda items for the April 28th regular board meeting. Um, so we'll have the 4.01 is the revised academic calendar. We talked about that. 4.02 is the PDE comprehensive plan. Um, 4.03, community services for children.
Yes, this is an agreement with community services for children to provide head start pre-K services at Lincoln Elementary School for the 25, 26 school year.
Any questions? All right. Yes. A, a quick one. Um, how is the staffing at the, the, so the children's services? Uh, cause I, you know, a lot of staffing is starting to get reduced. So, um, ha- have you been keeping a good relationship with that? For the purposes of knowing if we're going to re, um, connect with this service? We don't have to pull it out at the last minute because funding and staffing have been pulled?
We've been communicating ongoing with them. Mr. Fontanaz runs point for our pre-K program and our head start programs under the equity office. And I have not heard anything directly from him with regarding concerns about staffing for this program.
Thank you. That's a good note to now. Um, moving on to 4.05, the fresh, no, no. Four, 4.04, Capital Blue Cross Live Healthy School Grant.
So this is approval of a submission of a grant for Capital Blue Cross up to $2,500 for school-based health and wellness initiatives.
Questions? Um, moving on to 4.05, Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program Grant.
Yes, so again, a number of these you've, you've seen before. Uh, this is the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program that we have 10 eligible schools that are greater than or equal to 50% free and reduced meal status. And so we are submitting this grant, uh, to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the Fresh Fruits and Vegetable Program.
Questions? All right, um, 4.06, Highmark Foundation Grant.
Again, this is, uh, approval of the submission of the Highmark Foundation Grant that would support physical health, school-based health and social health.
All right, moving on to 4.07, PA Helps Renewal Application.
Yes, so again, this is approving the submission of this application renewal, uh, through FIA and PA Helps. Uh, the purpose of this is to support, um, college and university students to complete their internships in school-based mental health fields. An individual who successfully gets this grant will be provided stipends in the amount of $10,000 uh, for approved student counselor interns and $2,500 for approved student nurse interns.
Questions? Just real quick, um, and the approval is a certain level of schooling certification. Uh, part of that is part of?
My understanding is that, uh, the intern has to apply with the state of Pennsylvania. We have to submit, uh, for approval that we are an institution where they can receive this type of, um, grant funding. But the, we don't apply on behalf of the intern. The intern applies directly to FIA.
Okay, so they are the ones that are saying this is an appropriate person to put in this internship.
Yes, thank you. And we are just the intermediary.
Um, 4.08, the 24, 25 federal title one and two funding adjustments.
Yeah, so, um, on an annual basis, they give us a projection for our title one and title two funding. And there's been a slight adjustment and we are just getting that board approved.
All right. All right, so moving on to courtesy of the floor on any item.
I really didn't intend to talk, but the cellphone thing really got me. I remember when I was that age, we had one radio. It was that tall. And you had news at 12 noon and 6:00 PM. And at children's time on the radio was five to six, Don Winslow on the Navy. Tom Mix. And Sunday, seven to nine was family hour. Family would sit around the radio and shows like, one was called Those With Love. It was a real heartbreaker, you know, a real tear jerker radio. And we had one phone. And when you picked it up, guess what would happen? A voice would say, number please. And then you'll tell her the number, she'd dial it for you. And if you're lucky, you'd get it to get a, a private line, which is hard to get. If you were to click, someone's listening on your phone. And our phone number was 942W. That was it. Wow, I live in the golden years.
Any other for courtesy of the floor? Okay, seeing none, open forum.
Executive session for personnel and student discipline.
All right, motion to adjourn. Okay.